Have a, if one gets pecked and it's bleeding, they will continue to attack that chicken. And you'll have to separate them. It's, it's a whole mess.
I'm just personally not comfortable with that meeting, just because there's so many people in our city who want chickens, especially-
What number would you be comfortable with? Ms. Drew had originally said before, when y'all heard this, it was eleven.
That's just what I remember from previous meetings, but it's not in my- Better missed the time to do that, which is so, you know, but if we just put our head, should we go into an ordinance and put this in there?
Look, she's asking for a variance, so you can put a stipulation on variance. Anybody that need the variance, you can put a stipulation on the variance. They don't need a variance for whatever reason, I mean, if they're able to have the appropriate number of feet and all that, then, you know, you're not here regulating. If you wanted to do a separate ordinance regulating that, that would be, you know, that would be separate.
And I said this meeting, I'm, I'm willing to work, I'm trying. Ms. Melinda had told me when y'all denied me last time, two months ago, she said, "Come back with a plan, make up a plan." Get with, Ms. Drew said she would get with me and to get with Mr. Greg. And I've done that, and I've done the best that I can. I'm trying to come up with a plan. I need what works for me, but also works for y'all. Um, I, I grew up here. This is my hometown. Sorry, I had to leave for a little while to go to bar. My mom got to be married, not my bar. Um, but I came home, 'cause this is, this is home to me. And I want to work with y'all, and I understand that, like you said, that this does open other people wanting to come in and they can say, "Oh, well, my doctor said this." But I can pull up more paperwork showing you that it's not just that doctor saying that. My doctor said that she'll give you my whole file. You can look at my whole file. I've been med compliant for four years.
So how much more time do you need to be in compliance?
With compliance with the fifty feet? I'll never be able to be in compliance with the fifty feet. That would only give my cages two and a, two point five feet of space. And then I would have a whole nother set of issues of being a neglect of my animals.
Look there, did someone else have one? Yeah, if, if anyone wants to speak, you can get on the speaker, just fill out one of your forms. And you please, twenty-three, twenty-nine, Augustine, and I'm embarrassed to say I'm not an animal lover, but you are. And I, it's your tenacity, and I've seen people come in requesting variances for all kinds of things. And, um, you really, she's done every, you know, she's done a lot, you know, to, to try to, and I just hope that, um, that y'all would consider, um, just based on what all she's done thus far, people get variances for doing less than that, so, good job.
And as I've said before, are you coming for me too?
You know, I'm not worried about somebody else coming behind her, you know, to get more animals or something like that. But my concern is all the people that you turned down to pass, they're the same thing. You know, uh, I don't know where we stand legally, on, on any of that kind of stuff, you know, I mean, uh, when I was on the board for the land use, you know, it had to be a hardship. It had to be proven to the board before it came up here. Now, I understand that she didn't have to go before the land use, I don't think. Is that right, Arlene? She didn't have to go before the land use 'cause of the panels. But I mean, the thing about it is, you know, you may be concerned about other people coming in, and I think you're right. What I'm concerned about is all the people that you turned down prior to this, you know, and there's a bunch of them. You know the ones I'm talking about, they're very vocal, you know, and it's, uh, not that they're gonna hurt your feedings. I don't think anybody could hurt your feedings, that's been up there. But, uh, but I don't know where we stand legally. You turned some folks down, you know, for two chickens. You know, the raise of four each, you know, and, uh, they had neighbors, uh, on both sides. You know, we're tired of them, turning them down. Just consider that.
I just wanted to clarify, um, she did come before the land use board and we did turn her down, but she was there.
When was I there?
Wasn't she there? I could've sworn she was there.
I've been here three times on that day.
We had one person who came before the board who asked for the same thing, and we turned them down. If it wasn't you, I apologize. She looked just like you.
I've only been here-
But we did, we did turn someone down about the same thing. It was exactly the same thing. So, may not have been you, but someone else that requested exactly the same, we turned it down.
The previous one that was approved was twenty-seven feet. I've done more than twenty-seven feet.
Have you ever been approved yet?
No, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, wrong words. I've done, the one that was approved in two thousand nineteen was twenty-seven feet. I've done more than twenty-seven feet. I've gotten rid of some of my animals. I'm willing to have stipulations written out stating no more animals, nothing of that sort. I'm willing to accept my stipulations and guidelines. I don't know if whoever went before her on the, I, I don't even know what that was. Um, I don't know, I don't know their stipulations. I know my stipulations. I know that, um, my animals are considered part of my therapy. They're emotional support animals now. To remove them from me will cause a hardship. It will cause severe damage to me emotionally. I don't know if you know anything about med changes? They're horrible. They're horrible. Because you're detoxing off of one while trying to start up a new one. I don't mean to use my mental illness as an excuse, but that's what these animals, I, I use them for. I mean, that dog's bigger than my pig. Not as fat, but, um, I don't take them anywhere except my backyard. They don't go anywhere. My, my emotional support that I get to take with me is a five-pound Chihuahua, and I don't even take him anywhere. I've seen some of you in public, and I don't take him anywhere, but I don't go anywhere alone. I, I don't-
Well, I, I would like to see you, I guess, since you don't actually have a, a set plan, 'cause you wanna keep everything you have.
I would prefer to, but I don't-
I was hoping that your, your goal was to slowly get rid of all of them. I, I, I know that, that's, that's asking a lot, but that was what I was hoping you were gonna attempt to try to do. And, you know, maybe in ninety days we can revisit, that's just, I'm just throwing some ideas out there. 'Cause I, I don't know, so if we vote no tonight, what's the timeline that she has?
When we vote no tonight, it's no, she has to get rid of her animals.
But how quick does she have to do it if we vote no? Is it like thirty days?
There's a stipulation.
With my animals being written up as emotional support animals?
We've never had anything in writing. I know we got that little letter from somebody, but we've really never had anything that indicates that chickens and ducks, so far, I mean, I'm not saying that they're not, but we just don't have anything written-
Both, y'all received two letters. One was from my counselor, one was from my psychiatrist, and stated that they were to be used part of my therapy.
Right.
I think the language kinda said that you stated that it helped you. So it wasn't real clear cut in all honesty?
I don't remember what it said.
And one was, one was just on a plain piece of paper.
Correct, and that was the one who was supposed to be here with me tonight, and she was unable to.
So, you know, to say it was, I'm not saying it's not, but normally when you submit something like that, it needs to be a real proper form.
Okay, so, but the first one that was from my psychiatrist was on letterhead.
It was on letterhead, but the language was very vague. Wasn't very specific.
I don't remember it too.
Basically, it said, from my recollection, they supported your request for what you were asking for. It wasn't a clear prescription or diagnosis that this is what's required for you to have.
I know, they, it was saying that they were part of my, they were used as part of my therapy. If part of this certain timeframe, y'all want me to get a letter with them clearly stating that I can? I know y'all are probably tired of seeing me.
I, well, you know, I think tonight when Mr. LaVossa, um, he was, he was very true when he said, you know, we've had people before, and we have turned them down for less quantities of animals than what you have. You know, we have ordinances, and ordinances are great. Everybody loves them, so long as they don't have to, you know. I mean, we, we-
There's an appeal, there's an appeal line for one year. And like Mr. Jared said, if they can come case by case with the information that I have and with the willingness that I have, I can understand it's, it's, but y'all have already approved this for someone before.
And we've approved, and we've not approved many others.
Correct.
So I'd like to put a stipulation in there if it passes, that they have no more than ten chickens. Or seven chickens. Let's do seven. Just four, it's a good number.
And I know she, Ms. Ellender, I know she currently does not have a rooster. Do you want to specify that she not have a rooster?
Oh, I don't want another rooster.
Yeah, no rooster.
I don't want another rooster.
Yes, that would be, that would be a stipulation too, that I would like to see. So-
What kind of timeframe would I have to?
We'll discuss all this after, but I would say that in what, how many meetings you been, ninety days and you got rid of six things?
Correct.
So I would think that within-
No, it's been, no, the last meeting that I was at was two months ago. So sixty days.
Okay, alright. So, um, and then forty-five days?
You would be specifying, is she, is she being given a variance for the pig and the ducks, or just for the chicks?
I no longer have the ducks.
So no ducks? I guess the pigs, okay.
No additional, no additional animals other than, is one pig?
Yes, one pig.
One pig, seven chickens, and no other animals.
Right, but, but like bunny rabbits are not the same, right?
So this is only, it's a livestock section.
Okay, alright. Yes, that's what I'm saying. So I-
Have a dog.
Yeah. And I would like to specify or stipulate that it stays clean. You know, I mean, it can get really bad really fast.
They do. They stay fairly clean. With the rain here recently, I did struggle with the pig's pen, I won't lie. But she was, that's another reason we, um, enlarged, enlarged, enlarged her, um, cage is to give her more space, because they're very clean. Many people don't realize that pigs are very clean animals. Um-
I had a pig.
They, they use the bathroom in one area, and I do, um-
That stinks.
I clean, and I have Mr. Dealer, when you come by, I had that pile of stuff in the back that goes and covers that. And, uh, we will continue to do that. We'll have to get a new load of stuff. Um, her feces is picked up. Um-
I will say, when I was there, I did not sniff. It wasn't bad.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellender, your stipulations would be number one, that the variance is only for one pig and seven chickens, no roosters, and no other livestock animals. Number two, she has forty-five days to remove any other-
Excess chickens or excess animals?
Excess animals. Number three, that it would be kept clean, free of any noxious odors, and that it would be, that would be a continuing obligation. And it would be, the variance would lapse if, if she violated that.
And this is, would not be to get new animals, right?
No ma'am, I don't want you to have-
At this point, I would like to call the question.
I think a motion to stipulation.
Uh, motion to stipulation, okay.
You have a second on that, a second.
Okay, and we vote that, then I call the question, okay.
And I'm in one hundred percent agreeance with those stipulations, because that does, it, I work very well with stipulations and it helps me. Ms. Abshire?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
So-
That's for the stipulation. So now, I mean-
That was for the stipulation.
That was the stipulation, not the- Okay.
Now you'd be voting on the variance with no stipulations. Is the stipulation amendment fair?
So do you, would, y'all wanna, do y'all, do we need to redo it? Would anyone have changed their vote? I guess if, if it was negative.
I'm asking, please, to just help. We had a suicide this weekend for mental illness.
Madam Chair, she's, she's had her three minutes. I think we're to the point we've got to-
Alright, we are ready to-
I call the question. I need a second to call a question.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
This is a vote-
This is call the question.
This is a vote on whether to, to vote on it without further debate. This is to close debates.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Abshire?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
So discussion is closed. Now you can vote on, I already got a motion and second for the original, so. Yes, if you want to pass, no, if you don't. I'm very confused. Can someone please explain to me, currently-
Now the time is for them to vote on the underlying var, uh, variance with no stipulations. And so, and the question's been called, Madam Chair, she should call the vote.
Do we need a motion in a second on that one?
Alright, roll call, please. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Abshire?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
So if the motion fails, the variance is denied.
How long do I have to remove my animals?
Make you go ride her up tomorrow, but I, we'll work with Animal Control for that.
I, I need to know, um-
I would call Animal Control in the morning. Alright, item number five, introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to enter into a corporate endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana, facility planning and control for Maywood Pump Station, planning and construction. Ordinance nineteen twenty-two, Mayor Danahay.
Yep, real quick, uh, Madam Chair, this is a, this is a one point seven five million dollar, uh, project that is gonna be funded mainly through capital outlay of the state. We've been awarded monies. So, and this is a motion to, to contract.
Second. Who made the motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion second. Would anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshire?
Yes.
Alright. Next item, item number six, introduction of ordinance creating a home rule charter commission for the city of Solfer. Ordinance ninety-two twenty-two, this one's under me. This would be to create a charter commission. Um, it would be appointed positions. A motion and a second.
I'm moving second. Who's second? Ms. Ellender?
I do.
I have several people sign up to speak on this item. We have Ms. Cindy Robertson.
Oh. Yeah.
Cindy Robertson, six-two-four, West Fairmont. Um, I have, uh, I emailed my councilperson, and I would like to verbally say that I would prefer to have an election so that we can have a diversity of voices as we move to, um, develop a new charter for our city. Thank you.
Ms. Sheila Bruce-Hard?
Thanks. Sheila Bruce-Hard, three sixteen, Cloud Street. Uh, first, just a quick question. Madam Chairwoman, uh, you said item six, and you said appointed.
I mean-
So, but this doesn't say appointed. I don't think the, the background information that I read, I don't think it said appointed commission?
That's the, the goal of the commission. We would form the commission and we would appoint members. So yes, it would be appointed.
Okay, I am, um, couple, couple things. I am disappointed that you all are rushing ahead with this so quickly. I think our mayor doesn't look good when this happens. He spoke to Channel Seven and said there were no discussions, shouldn't be coming up. He didn't think there was. It made him look ill-informed or not being truthful, and I don't think either one of those things are true about our mayor. So I'm disappointed for that. Um, also, you all are aware that there's a petition going on, and citizens are signing, uh, to have a, a charter commission that's elected and not appointed. And I've been, you know, even with the rain, we've gotten out as much as we could. Um, I don't, there's no hard sell. It takes me one minute to explain to people that the city council wants to appoint a commission to write a document that tells them what they can and cannot do, what the mayor can and cannot do, it governs the city. And that if we get ten percent of the electorate to sign this petition, according to the constitution, that, uh, that you have to have an election for this commission. People's eyes give it. They have no clue that you all got appointed for this. Um, and they say, "Of course, I want to sign," and they sign. There's no hard sell. These people do, very few of them say anything bad about anybody on this council occasionally, and I don't, I don't go into those discussions, but very, very few. Uh, so it's not anything personal against anybody on, on this city council. Um, it's simply that the citizens believe these should be elected positions and not, and not appointed. So I think if, um, you were to put this off for a month and see what the citizens think, I think that would be beneficial for optics and for you to listen to the people. I have heard from, uh, several people that have talked to different people on, on the council, that you all believe you were elected, and you were, you were elected to do a job, and you think this is part of your job, and that we should trust you. I don't think there's anything wrong with trusting our council members, but you say you're elected, so we should trust you. But we want to elect other people, so if we elected you, and that was the good and right thing, you should trust the citizens to elect somebody else. There's also been discussion about, um, it costs so much money. The second election for Nick Nazad did cost the city two thousand dollars. But there's no reason to call a special election. It has been sixteen years since the last home rule charter was amended. There is no reason to rush this and not wait a month or two, or three or four, or however long it takes to get an election together in order for the people to have, in order for the people to have their say. Sure, I forgot something I meant to say. That's all, I can come up with right now. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Did anybody else wanna speak on this item?
Yeah, I'm a citizen here too, and it's kind of big to differ, you know. Uh, this, this thing was adopted about sixteen years ago. That's the first time we had a home rule charter. You know, and, and, uh, that's what I, I remember of it. Uh, the thing about it is, I would rather have people appointed, uh, you people that were elected, have confidence in, and have politicians in there, 'cause everybody knows I don't like politicians, you know. And, uh, politicians get the bad rap, but a lot of it's true, you know. And you're gonna win this thing, you gotta put signs out, you're gonna become a politician before you get on the home rule charter. And, and, and through it, and I would think that's a good place to be. You know, you're gonna have a bunch of people out there that you're gonna be trying to please, you know, so you can get elected. And there'd be a lot of, a lot of turmoil, I think. Uh, it's working real well, in my eyes, and maybe not in anybody else's, but you guys appointed your, your people on the, on the land use committee. You know, I've disagreed with the land use committee hundreds of times, but you people appointed good people that stand up, they do their job, and I think the comment's the right way to go. It's cheaper too. Alright.
Just a couple of things I wanna mention, um, in reference to this. The commission will make recommendations. Those recommendations are voted on by the citizens of Solfer. So it's not like the commission is saying, "This is what the new rules are." Nothing happens until the citizens of Solfer vote on it and approve it. So it's possible all these recommendations could be appealed. But the hope is, is that they'll come up with some good recommendations to help move our city forward. We know there have been tons of, you know, there's new technology, laws changed. Uh, we know there's some things in the charter that conflict with state law, and we just wanna make it, this should be a user-friendly guide. You shouldn't have to be a lawyer to decipher what our home rule charter says. And you shouldn't have to look at our charter, then go look at state law and, and find conflicting information. And so that's kind of the goal here. Um, I do feel comfortable appointing someone. I do feel that the people in my district entrust me to do so. Again, I feel extremely comfortable with it, because at the end of all this, they still get the final say. Because they'll have to vote on whether or not they're comfortable with what the commission comes up with. Um, you know, I'd like, we, we want the most, I'm trying to think of the correct way to say it, but the most qualified candidates available. And I'm afraid that if we have an election process, various and middle must be saying, you're, you're gonna have a lot of people who don't wanna get involved, 'cause they don't want, they don't wanna get involved in politics. Um, I would like to see someone who is familiar with the law, um, someone who's tech savvy, who can look through that and say, "Okay, these are ways that we can make this more user-friendly." There wasn't social media back then. There's so many different things that we have at our fingertips now that they weren't thinking about in nineteen eighty-nine. 'Cause nineteen eighty-nine is actually when they had the last charter commission. 'Cause I think if I'm not mistaken, in oh-six, y'all mainly just did land use submissions, correct? So, I don't know if anybody else has anything else they wanna add about it?
Just real quick, I think, um, you know, the term that's been thrown around the most since I started campaigning was, "This has never happened before, and this is a gray area." So I guess that should've just been what I campaigned on, because everything that I come up with seems to be a gray area. Um, I probably know better than anybody the importance of appointments. Um, but I also was elected by, um, constituents in, in District Two. And majority of the constituents that I spoke with prefer to go with an election. Now I know today, we're, we're moving forward for just an introduction, so there is gonna be discussion later, um, on this. But just from the people that I've spoken with, that I represent, have asked me that, that, you know, I asked for an election. It's never been ever before, and that just seems to be my motto.
Yeah, feel alive first.
Right.
Well, and people I've spoken with opposite.
Right.
Knowing, we've elected you, uh, we've elected, you know, all the council people are elected. You wouldn't have been elected if we didn't think you were a good sound mind, and that we trust in, in your lead, so, um-
And I'm not speaking for your, yeah, I'm not speaking for District Four, yeah.
No, I'm not, no, I'm, I'm just, I listened to your point.
Right. Amen, I would do that.
So, um, I'm sorry, but that's how, how I feel, and we, we listen to one another. And it's our differences that gives us strength. I've always said that. But, um, you know, I understand a lot of people have their own strong views, and it's your right. We respect you for that. But everybody's entitled to- But everybody's entitled to their views.
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I did want to suggest a couple of technical amendments, just because of the importance of this and we don't, um, have to make as many amendments, um, right immediately prior to adoption. So the first technical amendment would be in the second paragraph between, uh, the statutory citation of thirty-three thirteen ninety-five one and the colon, it would be changed to read, the following provisions are applicable to charter commissions. Which is just a generic statement that we're reciting the state law in that paragraph. The next change would be to insert, uh, uh, to delete letter A in the list. And to, the third change would be prior to letter B, to insert section one, be ordained that the charter commission shall be subject to the following provisions, colon. Uh, substitute letter A where it used to be B, letter B where it used to be C. And the, uh, put C in front of members and D in front of the said commission. It just, just technically reorders it to make it a list. And I think that way, when we are publishing it, we're publishing it in the format that everyone gets to see it in. And, um, I think that would just make it where there's less confusion, um, and everyone gets to see it in the published format before we come back next month to do the public hearing.
Are you recommending we make those amendments?
Correct.
Okay, did somebody write that down? Because I was laughing, because I was sitting here like, okay, you're gonna have.
I have a type for Arlene, so if y'all just. If you just, if, if you just would, um.
I'm making a motion we amend it like Arlene just got it.
Take a second.
Because I thought I followed you, but I.
It will be published in, uh, for the public hearing in that format, and that way, uh, the only thing that would need to occur is you would need to have an amendment at that night to put any names in that you want to put in.
Okay.
Or, or other amendments to it, as y'all might see fit, but it would be in the format where that would be all that would be required. I, I'm sorry, and then the, the last thing would be to add section two, uh, and, and be it further ordained in, in the next section. But I'll, I'll send it to Arlene. That way it can be published in that question.
So we have a motion and a second to amend.
No, become in.
Come in. Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. And now I need, uh, motion and a second. So with, um.
We didn't do that.
I think that was just amended.
Give me guys a motion to. Introduction of it.
Now we're, as amended, correct?
The amendment.
So, motion and a second.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, and you got your motion and second? Item number seven is a resolution awarding bid for the Salford Housing Authority sanitary sewer lift station replacement, resolution sixty-four twenty-two, Mayor Danahay.
Salute.
Madam Chair, real quick, uh, the little bid was for NPP Construction LLC of six hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars.
Do you have a second? Does anyone from the, oh, that's a, to speak on that item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution accepting substantial completion for North Waterwell thirteen, Verdine Water Plant, Mayor Danahay.
Thank you, Mrs. Madam Chair, here on my real quick. Um, this is, uh, one of the steps in the, in the comprehensive plan that we put forth. You may recall, late, uh, two thousand twenty-one, we have, actually, we started that plan in early two thousand twenty. Uh, COVID and the storms pushed everything back, and, uh, putting the filter vessels, eight filter vessels at the Verdine plant into play at the end of, uh, two thousand twenty-one, and we saw a significant improvement in our water coming out of that plant. Uh, this was the next phase of this, which was going to be, um, uh, the drilling of this well. We knew it was in a pretty good place as far as the, the, the quality of water in that strata, because it was near the one that had collapsed on us before. Uh, we put that into play about, uh, four weeks ago, four to six weeks ago. Uh, it's putting out beautiful water coming into that plant, uh, as we expected to be, so, uh, steps one and two, improving the water quality coming out of Verdine plant are in place. Uh, we've got one more step. It's going to be a, um, pre-treatment system, uh, it's a cascading system which will remove most of the iron before it even gets to the filters. Uh, and so whenever, that will probably be in next year and a half, two years. Uh, it's about a three million dollar project. And so, uh, with those in place, uh, the Verdine plant's in really good shape, probably in the best shape we've seen in decades.
That's great news.
There's also a, a pH, uh. Yeah, there's a, uh, there's a caustic, um, uh, enclosure that, um, they took out of service. We can't really understand why this was done, uh, many, many years ago. I say many years ago, probably six, eight years ago. Um, and it, it, it regulates your pH, uh, levels is what it does. Uh, that will be put back in play. We're waiting on a control panel for that to be, uh, put in place, so, something like that.
Anyone wish to speak on that item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender? You have, Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is resolution granting, uh, variance to Jerry Powell, three oh nine Morgan Road to allow for mobile homes to be older than ten years of age. It is, uh, two thousand and two, resolution sixty-six twenty-two. Ms. Melinda Hardy, and we do have someone signed up to speak on that.
Make my motion? Second. Mr. Powell, are you here to speak?
Yeah.
Is there anything you want to say to us? We have pictures, I think.
Yes, I think I've, uh, I've provided the council with everything they requested to avoid pictures. It's their paperwork, and as far as my understanding, uh, the mobile home has passed the inspection, see, when they went out to inspect and everything, and, uh, I'm just trying to get a roof over my head. Last couple of times I've been here, and, 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 uh, just about exhausted all my funds with fees and bonds and off-site storage for my other mobile home to come in, so I'm just waiting on the council to give them a decision.
I've spoken to Public Works, um, and, um, as you can see those pictures there, uh, I don't know if y'all have any other questions?
We can't see the, they're on here, so.
Mr. Powell, did you buy this before you got the, went to the city?
Yes, ma'am.
It was purchased before?
Yes, had no knowledge of requirement, so I did buy it beforehand.
So, Danny, you got any information over there?
No.
Anywhere about when he purchased it and then when he, so when did you know you had to go get a permit from the city?
When I went to get the permit to move it.
So how did you know to get a permit to move it, and you didn't know to get a permit to bring it into the city?
When I went to get a permit to move the trailer from where it was sitting, where I bought it from, it was in from Lake Charles. When I went to get a permit to move the mobile home into the city from my lot, and they told me that they couldn't bring it in because it was over ten years old. But I could request a various, and that's the first I heard of this. I lived in an older trailer. This trailer was, at the time I bought it, I had to fight almost ten months to get a settlement on my damaged trailer. And by the time we got out into the market to try to find it, I had, we're both on social security, and so we only got about six percent of our loss. And so we had to fight to get something that we could afford. And this was a good trailer, it was good set up, a mobile home, and, uh, so we, we bought it. Not knowing that we had, the city had this limitation. So then I filed for the variance, and here we are, months later.
I see you in one picture. Took a picture in front of the mirror.
Uh-huh.
Um, so the roof on it is, is, does it show all that here to us? I don't think so. How old is that?
The what now?
The roof. How old is your roof? Did you repair it before?
It's, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's a new roof on it.
Okay, I didn't get to go see this one.
Who went out to see it? Uh, Mr. Jerry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Jerry, and his report is. Yes, ma'am, and we do not inspect mobile homes as they're regulated through HUD. Um, but they did go and take the, the filters and make sure that there was no obvious damage or repairs that were needed in the way of the roof or, um, insulation underneath the whole, like, uh.
Do you have any more questions? Right, and I know, um, if not Mr. Bill had signed up to speak.
I didn't, I didn't mean to write that down if I did. I thought it was my trailer house.
Were you aware of the other requirements when you set up a mobile home, the skirting and all, that you're gonna have to do?
Uh, as far as setbacks and everything?
What, no, the skirting around your mobile home.
Skirting, yes, ma'am.
You have new skirting, or did you remove it from where it was?
My other trailer was damaged and towed.
Right, I just.
Granted, we're having it demoed and pulled off.
Right.
Then we have this trailer brought in, if y'all approve, and then it will be set up according to the, to the, uh, uh, requirements in the, the, uh, list of restrictions and requirements that I have from the permit.
So, so where it's, and these images that we have for us, these are from where it was sitting in Lake Charles? Is that where it was?
Yes, ma'am, it was in Lake Charles. Uh, I think the lady lived in it over there for some twelve years.
It's still in Lake Charles?
It's in storage now at a mobile home mover place, moving place. Which I paid for a month ago.
Has your lot been cleared yet? You said of your, uh, damaged trailer, three oh nine Morgan, has it been cleared for?
No, ma'am, it hasn't. I haven't done anything to y'all make a decision on what I can do. I've spent a lot of money just waiting.
It looks to me that some of the rooms have some ceiling damage.
Ma'am?
They have stains on the ceiling, ceiling damage.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't leak or anything like?
No, it's a new roof that's been put on.
What do you plan to do with the things that need?
Already have the sheet rock box sitting on the floor under that, ready to go up.
I mean, the, the outside, the images that we have, doesn't give you a full view. I mean, what we have, it doesn't look like there's, uh, any exterior damage showing, or it looks like it's all beat up or anything.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly needs to be washed, which I would think that you'd be cleaning it. I mean, that happens, you know, it's fine when it happens. Uh, it's hard to kind of tell, but to be honest with you, I mean, from what I've seen, it looks, looks in really good condition, but.
Not because I bought it, but I think it looks pleasant. Someone I see going up down the road right now.
Yes, sir, you're right about that.
Do we have some more questions, or are y'all just gonna hold it longer for the moment? Do I have a sec? I had a motion, you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, alright. Roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Abshar?